All the work of the Northumberland County Planning Commission for April seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Stuart Roll call please.
Chris Crowley.
Here.
Vivian Diggs.
Here.
Alan Garland. John Couse.
Present.
Roger McKinley.
Here.
Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
Sophie O. Parker.
Here.
Heidi Wilkins Corey. Charles Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum and Mr. Garland and Ms. Wilkins Corey told me they were not together.
Okay, could we stand for the invocation, please? Well, I thank you this day for another day in Northumberland County, Virginia. And pray that you will guide us, direct our path. Keep us simple. Bobby, thank you for what you have given us. May we make the best use of it. Amen. Amen. Thank you. Page one. Page one. Of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one page under God, invisible, but clear to be understood for all.
And thank you. Find approval of the agenda. Don't move.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, who the minutes from March twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Don't vote. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you. Commissioners comments? Commissioners comment? Comments?
I would just like to say, thank you so much to John for all the work that he's put in. And uh, it's pretty, pretty amazing what he's, you know, done with, with our planning, you know, commission work and uh, with the comprehensive plan. So we, we thank you, John.
Thank you.
Second act. Belts. No comments, sir. Sir.
No.
All right. Thank you. Um, Stuart, do you have any comments? Um, we do not have a public hearing as of yet for next meeting. So we'll get to work on the cop plan, the whole meeting.
Yeah. Oh, boy. Don't we have a public hearing tonight?
Tonight, I'm talking about next month.
Yeah, okay.
And we have not received any conditional use or any other thing that would be our public hearing. So uh, that, that's first for the year. Have any public comments?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. Okay, Stuart, let's go. C I P. All right. Uh, well, I did not receive any comments from the public.
Do you need to call the public hearing to order? Isn't there a protocol for that? I'm, if not, I don't, I don't care, but I thought there was.
Well, let's wait till Stuart comes back. Maybe somebody that we don't see might want to say something.
If there are anybody in, you didn't have a lot of land that uh.
Harvey, grab it. But did there anybody online? Only the reporter. Yes, ma'am. Welcome this evening. Okay, so I'll put the public notice up. Okay. And this public hearing is for the consideration of the Northumberland County Capital Improvement Plan for the period F five twenty six to twen- twenty thirty one. And I have no uh, person signed up for the sheet. Um, and like I said, I've received no correspondence either by email, phone, or any other way. So uh, there is no public comment. Thank you. All right. So we are considering the capital improvement plan. This is very unusual for another, we've done, as we said on the capital improvement plan, it just seems like there isn't enough funds to go around. Okay, Stuart, you want, you want to go ahead and take over from there? Well, um, I just want to remind the planning commission that the board supervisor is the, the responsible authority with financials. So they will fund what they deem is important. Uh, what the planning commission's um, job and, and duty regarding the capital improvement plan is to vet the projects to make sure that they are needed and are uh, furthering the uh, department that they're in and that they're not frivolous and that it's something that there is a need for and that uh, it seems to be reasonable uh, and then presented to the planning, to the board uh, as a recommendation. Uh, of course, the board uh, has the thought, has the authority to either fund it. They can fund everything in the co- conference, in the capital improvement plan, or they can fund one or two or none. Uh, so it, it's uh, uh, what we did is basically vet and, and discuss with all the department heads their projects and uh, we prioritized it according to our criteria. Of course, they have their criteria where they, almost all of them say it's urgent. Uh, but we, we uh, Mr. Cost and uh, Ms. Wilkins Corey uh, and Mr. Parker all worked together and uh, graded uh, each project. And uh, so what, what I guess what I'm getting at, uh, I know it's kind of hard to do, but then you don't worry about the money because it'll, it'll work itself out or it won't work itself out. But uh, that's the board's uh, jurisdiction of it. Um, I don't know if, if y'all want to go through line by line or you just want to ask.
We had to make a suggestion. We do it department by department and vote after each one rather than get through all of it because I, I, the first several are going to be very easy. It's not until we get to the schools, I think we're going to have some discussion.
Second.
That wasn't a motion, but just a suggestion, Mr..
Right, a suggestion, but uh, because it's so important, I, I would prefer we go through it line by line so everybody will understand where we are. Okay, Stuart.
Okay, so the sheriff's uh, office uh, wants to replace four vehicles. Um, they um, usually replace three to four. Um, but it, the, the lead time on getting vehicles is, is almost a year now. So anyway, uh, that, this, this time we're gonna uh, replace uh, four vehicles. Uh, and they're, they're spread out over, I mean, it's, it's a reoccurring thing. They, they run those things and they're, they're put a bunch of miles on them, but they're also running twenty-four hours a day for the most part because when they're, I've seen the engine runs and that wears out the vehicles too.
Probably makes sense to explain, explain the spreadsheet again because there's a lot of things down here to ignore.
Okay.
Okay, so we're on this line right here, replace four vehicles, roughly the annual cost, what they've requested from the sheriff's department. How much was approved but not funded? So we approved a hundred and thirty thousand last year, but it was not funded. So here's this number again, right here. You can ignore all these for now. Those are out years. They appear. So the total amount that is in the C I P request for this year is this number here. And we're going to go down the line that way. They, they, uh, the sheriff has ranked this a B, which is necessary, but we've ranked it an A version. And that we, the subcommittee.
Okay.
So, so no cars were purchased last year?
Right.
Uh, so uh, the sheriff has asked the board supervisor for a new deputy position, but it has not been approved yet and uh, if they don't hire the person, then they will not need the additional vehicle. So that's uh, eighty-one thousand and it, they didn't fund it the year before. And so I, they don't, we don't think they're going to fund it this year. So we didn't put it in for this year.
Committee gave it a C. Nice to have, but it's, it's going to happen.
Uh, the sheriff wants to get tasers to deescalate si- situations before they have to draw a firearm. And there's, there was one on a situation not too long ago with a guy with a knife that uh, could have been resolved a lot sooner than if they, if they would have had tasers. Uh, these tasers are uh, refillable. Uh, they have ten probes instead of two. Uh, there, there's a service contract so that when you discharge them, the manufacturer will recharge them for you. And so basically it's six, it's five or six years, I think. Six, I think it's six years.
They have an expiration date where they're not any good anymore.
After the service contract, I think that's on there. They're not any good anymore. Uh, but I'm not sure what the date is uh, on them. But um, we, we, Mr., we asked how many discharges of firearms, but uh, you know, it, it, it's just basically, it, if this thing has allowed uh, has a red, red, a laser sight on it. When somebody sees a dot on their chest, a lot of times that'll change your mind. And it's also got a large siren warning that it's like a phaser charging. It goes low volume to high volume. Another thing that maybe I ought to think about what I'm doing before I do it. Uh, so even just the lot, just the laser sight and the sound may be escalating situation. Anyway, we thought it was a.
Uh, we did ask the sheriff, when was the last time a, one of their deputies discharged a weapon in, in, on a scene and he couldn't remember. It's been a long, long time. But again, to Stuart's point and his point was very articulate. Look, this prevents the need to do that. It deescalates the situation.
How did the committee grade that one?
We graded it a B, which is ninth necessary. Uh, by the way, at least one member of the board of supervisors has told me this is important to him. Uh, so expect that one's going to get more attention, but we, he, he ranked, the sheriff ranked it a B as good lead.
So for the sheriff's office, we got three hundred eleven thousand, five hundred twenty-nine for the vehicles and fifty-nine thousand for the uh, tasers.
That ten units.
Yeah. Um, next is EMS, which uh, we did not spend a lot of time on because um, they're self-funding. They have uh, ambulance fees to take people and they have a, account that they uh, replenish uh, each time they take a patient to the hospital. So they're self-funded. Uh, and they have a five-year plan to replace all of their equipment. And uh, it's not coming out of county budget, it's coming out of their budget. Uh, but we can go through um.
Well, are, are we budgeting uh, money for new vehicles for the EMS?
No, they're using their own money that they've earned to buy new vehicles.
That looks like we don't have it up there.
Right here. Well, the money's there, but it's not coming out of the capital improvement fund. It's coming out of the EMS budget. So.
They earned that much in a year's time? Four hundred and twenty-five.
No, I mean, this has been, the, the count's been building for a while.
Awesome.
Uh, I mean, uh, but uh, it's not cheap.
No.
To get transported by an ambulance.
Yeah, the, what my takeaway from our discussion with him is don't get sick.
Drive, drive yourself to Tappan Hennecur. Come on. Don't wait to get sick enough that you can't drive yourself.
Good old media.
Those are self-funding. What are we supposed to do?
We still have to approve it as a capital, uh, as a capital appropriation by law. Yep.
Uh, so there, there's uh, two EMS, uh, see, I, I bet's, that the uh.
One's EMS, one's an ambulance.
Yeah, I think that, that's the uh, emergency services coordinator. Um, it can be a backup. The thing is now, when they take the emergency services coordinator vehicle out to a site, then they don't have a backup in case there's a second incident. So this would be a second incident. So they'd have a, a second EMS response vehicle uh, in case the first one was tied up. And then they're replacing an ambulance uh, because they, they sort of like the top cars. They, they run them pretty hard. Um, next, they have to replace their cardiac monitor.
By the way, all of these are out years now. Only those two are requested for this fiscal year.
And that was one hundred thousand for the EMS response vehicle and four hundred and twenty-five thousand for the ambulance replacement. Uh, so they're replacing their cardiac monitor, uh, assistant chief vehicle, an, another ambulance. They're gonna, in two more years, gonna need to replace another ambulance.
How many ambulances do we have in the county?
Well, I, I don't, I couldn't tell you about the rest of the volunteers, but I think we have four for the paid squad.
Yep.
Two.
Four vehicles.
Two main and two reserve. The two reserve are the old ones.
But you say we have some volunteer ones.
Yeah, I mean, there's Fairfield's and Galio.
New County, yeah, we've got six, six ambulances.
I don't know what happened. I can see on my screen.
Click the bottom right there. I don't know if it's anything or not.
But we're. Oh, I can't, I can't get on that screen. But I do. And uh, it was acting weird when I plugged it in. It was like the screen was getting small, it was smaller and larger and smaller and larger, but it was working fine there for.
Where's the numbers? It threw it off.
Always. Hard copy.
Always.
It's on the webpage.
Yeah.
Well, again, view it. Cost is for a helicopter ride. You don't want to know.
Proving of all this stuff, don't we qualify for a pre-ride?
Fair.
Hand, hand out coupons or something like that?
Fair.
You have something going on there.
Nine hundred dollars. Thank you, sir. There you go.
What was it, tarot plan?
Uh, the cable.
Say cable.
Uh, different cable. Oh, different cable, good. And then there's a, a, another light pack cardiac monitor. Evidently they have a lifespan as well. Um, so the only two projects that are currently for this year are the hundred thousand for the EMS response vehicle and four hundred and twenty-five thousand for the replacement. Uh,
I anticipate that that will be self-funded. That's like a half a million dollars.
Yeah, he, he, his budget always assumes that he's paying for it.
Uh, so Department of Sanitation, um, D Q has regulations on how old uh, a generator can be. And this one is past its lifespan. Uh, so there is a post office, office list station in, in uh, Reedville on the right-hand side, right when you come into uh, Reedville. So they want to replace that one. Um, the vacuum truck, uh, the sanit- and not many people know this, the sanitation district uh, runs uh, I think twice a week, a vacuum truck from the Calio Sewer Treatment Plant to the Reedville Sewer Treatment Plant to take solids out of the system because the Calio Sewer Treatment Plant can't handle this the sol- the solids. And so they take it to Reedville so they can process it. So they have this big vacuum truck and I don't know if you recall, one year or two years ago, we bought the vacuum truck. And basically uh, that's what goes back and forth. And in the winter months, when the uh, night is sub-freezing, uh, that they have to rinse the, the tank out and rinse the bump out and purge the, uh, water out in the air because they do not have a, a garage to put it in. So that's man-hours and time that it takes to do that each time. And so if they'd like uh, to do is to build a, a, a steel building with insulation and heat so that in the wintertime, they can just park the truck and go and leave. Not worry about the equipment uh, getting frozen. And so that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
We approved that last year, but the board did not approve it.
And it was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand last year. Uh, uh, they asked, I think last year they asked for a four-by-four truck with a camper shell. And uh, I, they didn't fund it last year. So uh, that's, that's lower, believe it or not. Forty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five for the four-by-truck, four-truck camper shell. And that's the last of this year's project. So this year's project is a post office list station generator, the uh, building or garage for the back truck and a four-by-four with camper truck shell. What they'd like to do in the future, there is a uh, section of the Reedville sewer that goes through uh, um, a marsh. And it uh, it has the potential to leak and it's very hard to fix one because of the marshy ground. So they want to get rid of that line and obtain easements and go along the upland and not have sewer lines going through the marsh. They want to reroute one of the sewer lines. And that's the Reed, Reed Sutton Gravity Line, and that's a hundred and sixty, uh, four thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, I can't remember that. Air, air vac, that's uh, those are the vacuum pods, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so if you recall previous years, they replaced some vacuum pods and I learned this year uh, that the Fleeton and Blackberry side of the Reedville Sewer Treatment uh, area, service area is a vacuum system. And the Reedville proper is a gravity system. And so uh, the vacuum system is used when you're higher than the sewage treatment plant or lower than sewage treatment plant. And you have to go uphill. So the vacuum allows that. So these are spare parts for those uh, pots. Uh, there's a pot can uh, connect to four houses. And uh, so they have many of them out there. Uh, and they need spare parts for those. And that's uh, estimated a hundred and fifteen thousand and a hundred and seventy-nine dollars for that. They would like another truck. I can't remember that's replacing one or whether that's uh, just a needed item. Uh, it was four, forty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, the Fleeton vac, we, we didn't talk about a lot of the things that are further out. Uh, but they need to upgrade the Fleeton vacuum, uh, vac stations uh, with new equipment as well as Blackberry. Um, and uh, they want to do some uh, upgrade uh, the actual building. Uh, for, for uh, I think they want to have an area to work on equipment and be able to have an actual workshop that they can uh, take things apart and work on them and have machinists work on them and things of that nature. Uh, and that's a hundred and sixty thousand, but that's not, that's out uh, for the five year. So this year, like I said, it's a forty-eight thousand, eight ninety-two for the post office lift station generator, a hundred and sixty thousand for the building for the back truck and forty-seven for the uh, four-by-four truck.
Or Stuart gets into the schools, uh, let them go through the, or, or was there something else before that or those were at? Let's do the county administration once next, then come next school, if you don't mind.
What, what happens to the old generator that's there now? Does this just stay there and the other ones are backed up?
I think they probably take it as a trade-in, but I'm not sure. I, I did not ask that question. So I, I know they don't keep it on site, but the pump station's small. You have not enough room to have two generators there. But I, I don't know if they scrap it or they try and sell it. Uh, but that's a good question. I mean, it, it's basically, you know, like a car with two hundred thousand miles on it. It could go anytime. So I, I'm not sure how much of a market is out there.
You want to buy it? Is that what you're asking?
No.
Oh.
Just nosy.
He's got solar panels, right?
He wants to work on it.
Okay, so that, uh, the county administration, electoral board and uh, information technology systems. Um, the electoral board uh, asked to, well, the, the state is coming up with, can't remember the name of the standard, but it's, we're under standard one point zero and they want to go to standard two point zero to make our elections more secure. Um, and so.
Is that software or hardware?
Hardware and software, both.
It, it's a package. I mean, it's the actual vote counting uh, mechanations. Uh, and that's a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, of course, it, the state says we have to upgrade, but of course they don't give us money, money to upgrade. That's, that's typical. Uh.
We did ask the electoral folks, if we don't do it, what are the consequences? And there are apparently none at this point. Uh, the, so we, they gave it a B, so do we. Necessary at some point, but I don't think it's going to happen.
I'm sort of surprised because last ten years or so, I think our, our elections have been extremely clean and we really haven't had a problem with accounting.
It's a, it's going to be a state mandate at some point, though. That's the issue. Cause I agree with you. We're fine. There, there was a threat apparently in the statute that if we don't comply when the time comes, that apparently there's uh, a, a risk of our election results not being certified at the state level, which affects obviously state elections. It doesn't affect us locally, but we're not at that point. It's coming though.
I thought among the unfunded mandates would, had uh, stopped occurring after the uh, Supreme Court decision in the Obamacare decision. Uh, a third of the opinion dealt with unfunded mandates.
Well, there's uh, federal unfunded mandates and state unfunded mandates.
Oh, I understand.
It's the state.
One big constitution that covers this all, even Virginia.
Hmm. Uh, the I T department uh, needs to upgrade their uh, primary and secondary server stacks. Uh, the industry standard for servers is seven years, and I think we're at that, we're very close to it right now. Uh, so um, Mr. Cost asked uh, if, if uh, we should uh, look at cloud storage and cloud uh, Mr. Hadley responded that with a quote for the cloud storage for the same amount of time. And it's much more expensive to do it on. It's a bill you never pay. It's a subscription service.
Wow.
Now, we currently do have backup cloud storage. So our servers are backed up to cloud, but as far as it's a heck of a lot cheaper to own hardware and keep it in, in, in fact. Uh, and of course, that's not for a couple more years, but that's two hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Um, the treasurer's office, the payroll, the building zoning office.
Commissioner revenue.
Commissioner revenue all use uh, software that needs to talk to each other. And they're, they're using mostly R D A, but down in building and zoning, we have our own software, which is a kind of a homebrew software from a small boutique company. Uh, and the fellow that is running the company is, is getting ready to retire. So we need to switch over uh, into a new permitting and payroll software that all can talk, it can do everything from uh, log a short-term rental to uh, generate a list of all the dog licenses. So it's pretty encompassing software package.
What does that set us back?
A three hundred thousand.
What, each of these years?
About six hundred thousand.
It's based in. So I talked to Luttrell about it as well as Rob, um, in terms of splitting up, that made sense. That was the start because they virtually asked for six. But they're investigating, are there other packages? There, there are definitely other packages, but you've got, you've got uh, Mercedes, you've got Cadillac, you've got Chevrolet. We've got nineteen sixty-two Pintos uh, right now. R D A is not state-of-the-art, but it is used by very, very small municipalities. The, the next level up, you start getting into Tyler technologies, very comprehensive, far more horsepower than we can afford. So Luttrell's taking a look at, I gave him some leads on where to look for some other options. But right now, they're, they're looking at this in a, in a, in a positive, in a right way. So I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with what they're doing. Bill is coming due to some point though. By the way, the uh, Northumberland Public Schools are also on R D A, but their systems and ours don't talk.
How do they manage that?
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Our worst ways.
Pardon me?
It was absolutely. Uh, then the final for the county administration is the uh, H V A C upgrade for this courthouse here. Uh, it's uh, it, it's engineering as well as implementing and putting in the new system. Uh, and a little backstory on this, and I, I didn't know the story. I mean, uh, anyway, from what I understand, the original plans for this courthouse were a two-story courthouse. And at a certain point, the board decided they wanted to go with a one-story courthouse. And.
You know, there's an elevator in that courthouse.
In this one?
No, the, yes, right.
Okay. Well, regardless.
It's never, it's never of any use because there's no place to go.
Is it like the only one that last elevator that goes through the roof? So when, when they resized the building, they perhaps didn't resize the air handling system properly. The, the original calculations for the one-story building are not correct. And anyway, they've had humidity issues in here since they built the building.
Yes, I go there.
The main, I mean, it's, it's an issue with mold and mildew. Uh, they run new humidifiers and fans. I don't know if you ever noticed the fan being out on there. But the main thing is the records, the court record, the court office over there, it has. But the main thing is the records, the court record, the court office over there, it has all the board supervisor book, all the wills, all the land records, and deeds, and things of that nature, so.
Going back four hundred years.
Pretty important, yeah. When I was researching uh, the landings in the county, uh, I went back to the board supervisors uh, minute books. And once you get back to about nineteen fifteen, it's all handwritten.
Yeah.
And it's not the same person that writes it each month. So you got, you get used to one person's handwriting, and then you go, oh, I got another person, gotta figure out what they're, anyway, very intricate stuff. But uh, anyway, that's beside the point. So that's a million dollars, and uh, uh, Mr. Cost had put in here for both the secondary, the IT uh, servers and the HVAC perhaps might be a candidate for bond, as well as the equipment, voting equipment. So that leaves us to school.
May I ask you a question before we move on to that? All the records that are stored over there, are they all on computer?
No, some of them have not been scanned. Majority of them have, everything new is digital.
Yeah, I would imagine, how about the old?
Uh, but, I mean, you'd have to talk to the court, the circus clerk, uh, I, I, there've been uh, and there've been numerous attempts to digitize, and I think a majority of them are, but I, I couldn't tell you, I don't keep up with it.
Is the county responsible for that?
Yeah.
I have a ball scan.
Oh, well, no, I, I don't know, we're, we're, we're required to keep them now, I don't know what the state has regarding digitizing.
A couple of years ago, um, the historical society undertook a massive effort to digitize the records, and did a great many of them so extensively that the Museum of Virginia wired them. But it was an interesting little Mexican standoff. But um, historical society is more interested and they, way their minds work is, it's the oldest to newest. A lot of people will go new to old. So I don't know how far forward they caught, they took it. But they had all the land records, I believe, for the first couple centuries of They started at the oldest and came with.
I think all the land records are on there, because they can search on instrument numbers and deed books and things of that nature. Now, when you get to the wills and things of that nature, and uh, marriage licenses and things of that nature, and the board supervisor's books from nineteen hundred, I'm not sure if they have been done.
Right.
Uh, of course, the land records are most important. Well, I mean, for genealogy research, marriage records, things of that nature as well.
I'm just curious.
And there's, there's a good, good number of people that come in and do gene, genealogical research to the school.
Yeah, Deborah Bingham has been looking for opportunities to get the whole thing digitized. It's, you know, good luck, but she's definitely is trying, and doing a pretty fine job, I think.
Um, I, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, I see what.
Ooh, it's like it jumps away and disappears.
I know the feeling.
Yes, exactly, they seem to do that a lot. There are four items on the schools, uh, they rank them, and almost all are urgent, uh, and probably are, but there's politics behind every one of them, and so Stuart's gonna go through and tell you what they are, and then I think Garfield and I probably need to come back and tell you some of the backstory, because what's on the page may need to change in some cases. Still working well.
Okay, um, the, the playground has been uh, in disrepair, neglect, and they've had to uh, dam a couple of the pieces and remove them for rust and sharp objects and things of that nature, and uh, at some point, we put mulch down underneath the playground equipment, I, I guess to cushion the blow if somebody fell down. It might have been for drainage issues, but that gets soggy, and uh, they track it into the new floor that we paid for, or they paid for last year for the elementary school. So uh, they would like to get a new playground, um, that uh, it was scheduled to be done last year uh, with the school construction fund money, but other projects seem to take precedence. And so now they're going back to the county, and I'm gonna leave it at that, uh, so that I don't want to get too far into the back, backstory.
We'll be back.
Uh, two, two new passenger, full-size passenger buses. Uh, they requested that last year, uh, they requested the playground last. Um, but it was only three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, and now it's five hundred and fifty-one. Uh, they would need to purchase new, two new buses, they wanted to purchase two new buses last year, but they, uh, the board didn't fund it. So they're, they're kind of on a, a cycle, trying to get two buses a year uh, on through the next five years. Uh, I, I can't remember, but they gave us mileage of all of them, uh, and um, I mean, you gotta get the kids to school. Um, so that's two hundred and sixty thousand, eighty-eight, eight hundred and eighty-eight, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Um, that's for two buses, right?
Yes. Two seventy-seven passenger buses. Um, this SBO mold mitigation, uh, from what I understand, uh, the board supervisors, and this was when the school board was trying to determine whether they're gonna build their own building, or they're gonna use uh, the one in uh, the VVV building, and they were working on the roof, there were some leaks in the roof, uh, the county got around and fixed the roof. But there's still mold in the building, I think one of the persons, staff persons has issues with it. They hired a mold consultant, which did a plan on how to remediate it. And now there's certain things like encapsulating the painting or something about the mold, and, and they want to follow through with the recommendations in that plan, and that will cost a hundred thousand dollars. And that, that's all I got.
There's one more.
Um.
Who else?
Uh, the, as I mentioned, we talked about this beginning of the meeting. Um, DQ gave us a permit nine years ago for a, a new well for the high school, and they built it. Uh, and then shortly thereafter, DQ had tightened the regulations on well construction, where you have to route, I think, the full length of the well to prevent aquifer um, contamination between separate aquifers. Uh, they're at various levels, and they're worried about seepage from one aquifer to the other. And so therefore, they mandated that uh, we need a new well by March twenty twenty-six. And so that is, I, I, I assume that's, I, I don't know if DQ's gonna come down and shut the school down if the well's not done by then, but uh, at, two years ago, we had talked with the, the school, and they said they were gonna, they had talked with DQ, and DQ understood that they kind of put us in a pickle by approving a well that would, next year would not be uh, compliant, and that they would, had a grant program, and they were gonna try to uh, uh, apply some grants to pay for half the funding. And that team like DQ seemed to be okay with that. Uh, and that never happened. So now they want us, they want the, uh, county to pay the full bill, because the grant period is gone. So the uh, window for applying for the grant has passed, so that there's no way we can get a grant before the deadline comes. So that bumps the uh, price up uh, to three hundred and ninety thousand. We had already allocated a hundred and ten thousand dollars the first year of the capital improvement plan, and that is earmarked for them. And um, the next steps is what the, the school uh, maintenance person told us was to get an engineer to look at the two systems. There's a, there's two wells, there's one in the uh, elementary school, one in the high school, middle school. And he says there's a connection pipe between the two, but it hadn't been open in nine years, so he doesn't want to open the pipe until he gets an engineer to assess the interconnection and whether they, which, which one of the wells they should discontinue. The elementary school well is twenty-eight years old. The high school well is nine years old, so the maintenance person for the school thinks that the elementary school, since it's oldest, is probably more worn out, but he would like a ver, engineer to verify that. So the county drafted an MOU and gave it to the school board last uh, fall, uh, saying that we've allocated a hundred and ten thousand dollars, you can use that money. We have an engineer on call for the county, and you're welcome to use that engineer, but you have to use uh, the, your money to do it, not county money. And they have not done anything with that MOU until that last Tuesday. So they, they have signed the MOU, and I guess it has to come, did the board sign it first?
Yes.
I think the board signed it first, and so it's, it's ready to go, so they can hi, hire an engineer and get him to look at the wells. And uh, they're hoping they can replace the two wells with one well, uh, but that's yet to be determined, the engineer will tell us that.
So we're through the entire list.
But before we get off the well.
We're gonna come back to it, though. Um, so what, Mr. Chairman, at this point, should we go back and deal with the easy ones? Because the schools, we've got to talk more in depth about each of the items on the list, and maybe it'd be easier to get the other ones out of the way first.
Then all right, we can. Oh, really?
Yeah, I'm right, I moved the adoption of all the things that the, the subcommittees recommended, except for the Northumberland Schools, which we'll revisit shortly.
Okay. On the table.
Uh.
Okay.
Um, now, let's start with the well. The history, just to add a bit more color, and I appreciate Stuart not bringing this up from his perspective, so I'll bring it up from the more political perspective, if you will. Um, this has been an issue, we were first cited, as Stuart said, in twenty seventeen, that this needed to happen by the March of twenty twenty-six. The, this was, this has been known all along. Last year, we approved going forward with that, money was set aside, the MOU was drafted, and sat in Dr. Wargo's office for months with nothing being done. Uh, the, the contractor that is being used is already under contract to the county, is who we use at the county level. Nothing was done. During the course of our subcommittee deliberations, we had um, Jeff Flann, who's the facility, uh, I'm sorry, Jeff Brandon, who's facilities person, uh, Karen, Karen Leslie, who is the assistant school superintendent, and uh, uh, Tina Withers, who is the um, finance director. And they said they did not know the status of this. So we were, I, I guess the word I used was bold and aggressive with them, and said, look, this, you've marked this urgent, it is clearly urgent, because there will be fines associated with not doing this. Therefore, this, have this meeting happened in March. We said, we expect this MOU to be on the uh, school board agenda at their April meeting. If it is not, it will show a lack of urgency by the schools in dealing with this. Um, I had follow-up conversations with, with Dr. um, Leslie. It was on the agenda for the school board meeting this month, this, this weekend, was approved. Now, having said that, we need to go forward. But they've requested uh, five hundred thousand dollars for this. That number at this point is pure fiction. Because until the engineer comes in, as Stuart described.
Five hundred for two wells, five hundred thousand.
But we still don't know if we need to. So the engineering work will determine what exactly is needed. So as of this moment, we don't know what that number is, the, the money for the engineering work is already there, the money for the remediation is not. So I'm going to recommend, and I can't make a motion, because I've been talking now. Uh, I would recommend that we, in fact, approve the item, but not the money, and make it come back and revisit this item once we know precisely what the, the work is gonna be, because if we put five hundred thousand dollars out there, there's no way the board supervisors can or should go along with that at this point. So my recommendation, again, if somebody wants to make a motion to this effect, is that we approve in concept the well replacement as requested, but do not approve the money at this time.
So moved.
Well, we don't approve the money even personally.
You can't debate it until motion seconded or whatever. I second it.
Okay, my, my question is, the money is, the, the, the money is not there anyway. Our job is not to worry about the money, our job is just to characterize it. That's what we're doing, if, if that's a priority, I mean, what's gonna happen if schools don't have wells? That's not our, our preview is just to, to put it in some sort of order. And uh, by doing that, I mean, that's on everybody else, we have all the money and stuff. And so, um,
In my mo, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, and I would just um, just say, you know, either you're gonna approve the cap, is the capital improvement, we, we rank it and say, this is important. A or B, whatever, I think, I think it's an A. Um, and let's just, that's just as far as we go as a planning commission. It's just that you asked us to put these CP, CP, CID stuff together? This is what we've done. Now, y'all gotta do the work.
Mr. Chairman, my motion was to approve this in concept, just not put a dollar value on it. So I, I
Yeah, that's fine, so I'll, for sure, motion. That's Well, the motion was.
Uh, we advertised and uh, published this document right here on the web for people to view and to look at, and so I don't think how we can change, if you, are, are you suggesting we take the three hundred and ninety out of this line?
Yeah.
Because we advertise it this way, and if we are gonna take that and make that zero or leave it blank, then we'll need to re-advertise, because we put forth, this is what we're considering. And uh, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not sure, we wouldn't have to re-advertise and, and have another public hearing, because we changed.
We, if we leave it like it is, it's still up to the board supervisors.
That's what I was gonna say, they have not funded things that they do not.
We're not hurting anything by approving it as it showed. Until you get the engineering study, you won't really know how much money's good. So that's a best educated guess.
But all of these are estimates, and it's very likely that when, when it comes to buy these things, the price will change. And the board will act accordingly.
Right.
If they feel that it's not worth it, then they won't fund it, and of course, they owe the first greens. So I, I, I understand where you're going with this, Mr. Cost, but I, I, I think that's not the planning commissioner's job, the budget is the board supervisor's job, and if they want to pay the three hundred and ninety, I mean, they, they could pay two hundred thousand, or, or whatever is necessary, and these are just placeholder numbers, they aren't.
Let me.
I mean, we got close, but in two years, or a year.
All the rest of the notices that we've, okay, they're just, you know.
Yeah, they're suggestions.
Let me raise another thought that I was going to do when it first came across us. Are there any public health concerns at the moment from contaminated water?
That was not brought up during the course of the discussion.
I, I do not believe that is the case, the protection of the groundwater resource is the, is the reason for doing this. The integrity of each aquifer.
I'm concerned about school kids getting uh, dirty water.
Well, they have a chlorine system, they, they actually add chlorine to the water, so uh, and they have to do well tests and submit it to the state, because it's a public water system. So I don't think there's any problem with quality, I mean, we would hear about it.
Okay. I think it's okay to leave it just like the subcommittee put it on there. And then it's the board of supervisors' responsibility to ask for more positive figures, since we don't have them either.
Right.
I defer to John on this, but given the timeframe, I think we have to at least get a green light on the M, the work under the MOU. The engineering study. At a minimum, that has to happen. Oh, definitely, but it can't happen until it actually happens.
Well, the, the county administrator in the fall of last year said that they could use a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the engineer, and can you, are allowed to use the engineer.
Who said that?
The county administrator sent an email to Dr. Wargo that this is, there's a hundred thousand dollars in, in the approved, and the MOU will allow you to tap into our engineer without having to contract, and you can just use it under our contract, but you have to use them, that hundred thousand, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, it's allocated.
So that's in a reserve account somewhere.
It, it is earmarked, I, I, I'm not sure exactly, but it, it, there is a hundred and ten thousand for them to be able to use to
Right.
determine what's needed. Hopefully, they're not gonna use all of that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the, the issue that Stuart is raising appropriately, I gather, is that the uh, the issue is the Open Meetings Act. It's not the, the issue of how we're proceeding from our numbers and all that perspective. So the, the question to me is, do we, as a planning commission, having posted a public hearing with a public document and possible set of recommendations, have the authority to change those recommendations and pass them on to the board of supervisors without holding an additional public hearing? I don't know enough details under the Open Meetings Act, I find it very hard to believe that we don't have the latitude to make those changes without an additional public hearing, since the supervisors has to have one too.
Well, you, whether they're gonna send it back to us, probably. But my, my thinking is that as soon as the MOU, as soon as the contract, and, and they get that done, um, because what we're doing now Um, because what we're doing now is, um, we're wasting time. Because time is of essence right now, as far as I'm concerned. And, uh, I'm hoping that, um, with what's going on with the board supervisor and school board and all that. But I don't want, I do not want the planning commission to get in the middle. Even though that might be exciting to some of you, it is not exciting to me to get into the middle of this thing that they are doing, whatever they're doing. But I do know that, um, children are gonna need potable drinking water.
And flush toilets and.
Right. And so, um, if they need to, if we need to come back again and look at it when they do the M O U. Let's do that with per the board of supervisors. What I don't want is for the planning commission to. To be brought in the middle of something that we have no business in the middle of. They asked us to do the C I P. We've done that. We said, this is where we are. In our next public hearing, and, uh, citizens are probably gonna bring it up, no question about that. But citizens elected both the board supervisors and the school board. Yeah, uh, uh, am I, am I correct? So I know all the talk going on about reappointing the school board and all that, but citizens voted. Which means it's probably what they wanted. Uh, they voted, they just didn't get what they expected to get.
Does the, does the figure, um, in the end column for the well? Does that include the, the money for the engineering study or no?
No, no.
Okay.
Well, no, I, I think Mr. Brand said the five hundred thousand included engineered, the engineering costs were included in the five hundred thousand, if I recall.
The town is already approved.
I mean, I think we asked him if, if the engineering was included in the, the original figure, and he said, yes, that's what I would.
Which means that the figure is already wrong by a hundred and ten thousand dollars, because that was previously approved.
Well, originally, the hundred and ten thousand was supposed to be one installment, and then another installment of a hundred and ten thousand would give them two twenty. And it was five, that would be almost half of the money, and then they would get a grant for the other half.
Uh, but Mr. Brand did not know the financial history of all this. He did not know about the M O U and all that stuff. So there was a lot of things that e- even the assistant superintendent and the finance director did not know. This, this history has all been brought up in the last month. If it's the, wish of the commission, the majority of the commission, if Patrick wants to withdraw his motion.
Right, well, i- in all in favor to the assistant superintendent and the new financial person, they have not been on the scene long enough.
That's right.
To know what, what's going on.
But nor did Jeff, yeah.
So. I'll go with whatever.
Mission thinks best. I'm happy to withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, all right, okay, so we're back to the original there. We're gonna send this, if this is going to public hearing.
We still have to talk about the other.
Right.
Items.
We're getting there. Okay.
Okay.
All right, Stuart, you can go there.
Um, this is back to the discussion. So if you come back to the, uh, the playground. Uh, we did approve the playground last year, and, and my understanding is in checking with supervisor's office or with some of the supervisors, they approved the funding for it. But the funding was used for other stuff. The school came before us last year and said, urgent A one was the playground. They got it approved. They didn't spend it on it.
So.
Uh, was, it was a part of the deal. That they were gonna do certain capital improvement projects and use the school, uh, board. They were gonna build a new school board. And since they weren't gonna build a new school board, they were gonna use that, uh, construction fund money to fund multiple capital improvement projects. And that included, uh, resurfacing the indoor gym, basketball gym, resurfacing the track. Fixing the sidewalks in the high school, uh, multiple projects. And I, I don't know how it got, how, which one got in front of the other one. So, but at the end, there was no money left to do the playground. The boiler.
No, that had happened before that, but, but that was earlier in the year. Um.
But at the end, there wasn't enough money to do what they, what they wanted to do.
But we come back again to their, the school board presented strongly that the elementary school playground was their number one priority. And they had stack ranked the other things. The school board, I mean, board of supervisors approved the money, assuming it was going to be used for the playground. And it did not get used for that purpose. It got used for other purposes. They were priorities. Stuart's point, they were absolutely priority, and they were legitimately funded with those, tha- that source of money. But it was not the priority that the board of supervisors had expected when they gave them the money. So the question is, do we try again? Or has that, that ship sailed? Let's, let's figure out another one.
Well. I don't, I don't remember exactly that way, but, um. I don't see where you have, have a choice unless you just do away with the elementary, the elementary pool. Just wash, probably gonna just wash their hands of it, and we just have to do something different. Because, uh, some of that money went to replen, repair this, the water drainage to the other guy's property.
That was actually county money.
County money.
And I think that was school board money. That was county money.
Okay.
Uh, that, this drainage from the parking lot and it goes to the playground, also goes to a storm mark pond that goes underneath the road. And previously, two years ago, we had issues and we had to fix it. And then just recently, we had an issue with that big rain.
Right.
As well, um, but, um. It, it's definitely been a contention because this, this playground deterioration did not happen overnight. Um, so it, it's been on radar screen. It just hasn't been taken account, uh, care of. And now, uh, they want the county to pay for it.
So the challenge we have is one of credibility of the school system. Mr. Parker, to your point, i- is that a fight we wanna get in the middle of?
No.
Right, I, I don't either, but we're there. And the fact is, you know, yes, these are legitimate projects. We've already approved them. Do we have to approve it again?
No, they didn't fund the school buses and we put it in there again, and, uh, we did.
Thing anyway.
They didn't fund the four by four for the sanitary district, and we put it again, uh. Again, it's the board decision. Uh, it, it can be in here and they put zero dollars to it. It, it's their decision.
They, they've got money, uh, they've got money in the budget for a playground, right? At this point?
No.
That money was.
Well, they had, they had numbers out there what it's gonna cost.
Right.
Five hundred, six hundred thousand.
Five hundred fifty one thousand, three hundred forty one dollars.
Actually, if you look at the paperwork on the playground, there's a mention of six hundred thousand.
Who says we need to spend six hundred thousand? Can you get by with a lesser, I, I don't know.
I'm just going with what is, by what is in the proposal. I assume you can get by with less, but I will.
Charles, to your point, that, that includes resurfacing. There's a lot of surface work, but there's also a number of e- elements of plate things on the surface too.
They, they wanna put the pavement down, and then they put this surface coating on it that's rubberized. That helps, doesn't, for skin needs and if they fall off. And then when they, when they do that, they have to have the mounts. When, before they put that, uh, covering on, they have to have the mounts for all the playground equipment in place. Because it needs to be a, a uniform service with no breaks in it, so that it works as intended and, and lasts long. Uh, but with, to your, um, point. You know, couldn't we do a modular thing and do, uh, uh, one unit here, one unit there? And spread it out, so it's not, that's a big hit, but you know, I didn't get the quote, so I. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm not a.
I'd say if you need a playground, I'm not sure we need a state of the art, uh, playground. Uh, but something nice, and I, I think that's up to the board. What, what, what money they think they've got to afford to, to put to that.
Um, it, they could potentially scale back the number of pieces of equipment. I don't know what's in the right thing. I mean, I, where I grew up, we didn't have any playground equipment at all. We had a playground. We had dirt.
That's what I keep thinking back about, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I think that pie in the sky thing, they're gonna have to make some adjustments. Everybody's gonna have to make some adjustments. Because if you don't make some adjustments, taxes are gonna go up, and if taxes go up, people are gonna be really cheap going. So I'm thinking that, um, approve it. The county is gonna be responsible for saying, the board supervisor is saying, listen. You cut back because you have to, because everybody else in the county is cutting back. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, I just believe that this school, this school system has put itself in a corner in some sense, in some. In some, they put themselves in a pie, and they want somebody to get them out. And, um, we got elderly population. People don't want to pay for stuffs like that. They think like we think. I played on the dirt. I threw baseball.
Yeah.
You know, uh, they want, so, so I think that I would send it, let them fix it. Because we've been playing with this for five years. Well, actually, she submitted it in about two twelve, two thousand, twenty twelve.
Wow.
And we just kept kicking it down the road. And what we're doing now is, we're finding out that, um. You can't keep kicking stuff down the road because it's gonna come get you.
Well. Price as you kick it down.
Right. Well, we were initially told that that was grant money that was going to be applied. That didn't happen. Then the school board, uh, or the board of supervisors, a couple of years later. Voted for, I think, three hundred thousand for the parking lot for the playground project. It was spent on something else. And now they're coming back with a bigger, you know, approved playground for something approaching six hundred thousand. No. There's gonna be a lot of bad, bad feelings at the board of supervisors level.
Does the school board not have any responsibility to spend the money the way it's appropriated?
Legally, yes. Practically, no.
I mean, whose responsibility is it to make sure that they do what they're supposed to?
At school board.
I'm sorry, the, uh, school board.
Board of supervisors.
School board.
School board.
School board, okay. But they basically have the, um. Office of Holly Wargo do the legwork and, you know, the financial mechanics. They vote on things largely on principle. They don't get their hands dirty digging in the details.
Um, so we have the two buses, uh, again, the, the money, uh, it's a recurring thing. Go with it or not. The school board office, mold mitigation, um, seems like a legitimate issue. However, you want to go.
Well, I'll tell you, one of the things, one of the things that the school board is gonna have to do is. Is that, I mean, one of the things that the board of supervisors did in the recent months is that they said, everybody responsible. Okay, what agency you're in, you're responsible, and we're going to check. Maybe a couple of years too late, but that's what, and I, I agree with that. Let them come, they, they're gonna say, uh, let's see your financials. That's not picking on any one group, but I mean, everybody, I wanna see your financials.
I think they're asking to do it every month.
Every month.
Reconcile it every month. And so basically holding the hand.
No. And which is, which is where we are. You have to do that because.
For all departments.
For all departments, everything in the county.
I don't know why that hadn't been done all along.
Because they're, when they did the forensic accountant. Forensic accounting study.
Quiet.
All of the departments in the county were part of that. All of them, with the exception of the school system, passed their audits. And I believe, and I could be wrong, that the other departments routinely. Turn in ac- ac- you know, accurate, timely financial reports. If not on a monthly basis, certainly on a quarterly. School board's never done that. That's what, two thirds of our county budget?
Yeah, but the procedure, the, the pros- the procedure that they're following now. Is going to help clean up a lot of mess because the turnover rate that the school board has had the last five years has been astronomical. Nobody would run a business with that kind of turnover that they've had, but four or five financial people.
Uh, yeah.
Four or five financial people.
Yeah.
And, um, just like driving a car, nobody drives a car, no, two or three people drive a car like. So that's gonna be fixed now. It should be fixed.
Eventually.
Yeah, uh, we, it doesn't, they, they don't have a choice, which is for the last five years. That's what should have been done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well, hopefully it can be corrected. So that everybody can look and see what is going on and, uh. Unfortunately, that hadn't been happened.
And what's gonna happen now is that it's budget time again. Northumberland is always the last school district to send their contracts. They've lost a lot of teachers. And go somewhere else and, and be assured that this is gonna take, that they're gonna get their contracts on down. And now that the budget process for Northumberland probably won't get approved until July.
School board normally sends o- off something in the way of a draft budget. To the board of supervisors. March, April. For reasons possibly beyond their control, Holly Wargo hasn't been around and is not likely to be around for a while. Uh, that's gonna kick us past the state deadline. And if, that's what's going to make the contracts coming out late again. Because you know what, you know what, you don't know what the numbers are.
But other school, um, systems send out contracts with a, uh, 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 header that says. Um, contingent upon funding, full, fully, being fully funded. But that doesn't give the, the teacher signed the contract a lot of, uh, uh, assurances and. Uh, feel good, feel, good feelings, uh.
Mr. Chairman, we're way out there.
The board of supervisors level a couple of times in the last three years. And the school board has refused to send out early contract containing that language.
And it's their decision.
We're way beyond the scope of our, so.
Yeah.
The, the question before us is approval of the remaining items.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the, the remaining items? Have you heard any, all of them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
All right. Oppose, want to oppose?
True.
Okay.
All right, I, I, I'm sorry, I was writing, who, who was, who's, who, who made the motion?
I did.
Um, C C first, and whom seconded?
I seconded.
R M seconded, and, uh, um, Mr. Cost and Mr. O'Brien, N A, and all the rest, I.
Right. That's sufficient.
All right.
Okay.
So that is the capital improvement plan, um. Next is the comprehensive plan. I, I think I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Cost.
Thank you, Stuart, uh, so.
He can handle it better than I can.
No, you're doing great. Uh, there's a supplementary agenda that I previously shared with Garf, Mr. Parker, and Mr., uh, Mackenzie for this part of it.
And there's hard copy made by Neil.
Right, um, so thi- this should probably take more, no more than twenty or thirty minutes if you can believe it. Unless you don't like this approach, in which case we can start going line by line through the edits. You don't wanna do that?
Not, I'm sorry.
So first of all, I just wanna talk about the big picture. Um, as I said at our last meeting, and I've said in previous meetings. I think that this document is, is well short of its description as a plan. There's a lot of things that could be done, but there's a lot of great content in here. And I, I, I think one of my profound discoveries was discovering the appendix A has incredible stuff. It's a great story about Northumberland County. Why not have that at the beginning, helping frame the reference for what's gonna happen in the rest of the document? And so, um, Stuart, if you will go to the, the package they hand us, I sent you earlier today. Uh, the first question is the chapter order. Uh, I sent you a, uh, uh, email, all of you, an email in the last few days that describes this graphic. So the left column is my proposed to you revisions of the chapter order. And the right column shows where that came from. So there's only two new things on here. There's a glossary of acronyms, because Lord knows, we've got a lot of acronyms, and the list of maps. Stuart's done a fantastic job with maps. Stuart's done a fantastic job with maps. I think that should be called out for easy reference so that they're they're listed up front. So what I would propose to do, and there will be a motion at the bottom here, is that we take what is now the the first part of Appendix A, make it the preamble. It's already written, you have it within edited form, it didn't require a lot of edits, very well written as I received it. And then to create an introduction immediately following that preamble, which uses the exact words from the first page of chapter one right now. It had no business in chapter one because this sort of describes the bigger picture. Glossary of acronyms, table of contents, list of maps, and then the order of the chapters uh is as follows. The the one thing that isn't in here, and you have not had a chance to review yet, is what used to be chapter two, the append, the goals, objectives, and strategies. That would become an appendix. Um, it has only minor modifications required in terms of minor edits, but it's gonna require ma- potentially major changes if we do a lot with recommendations. So I've intentionally put that off. I've not asked Stuart to review the work on that just yet. Um, so that would come later on. So in order to set the stage that this makes sense to you, um, Stuart, if you could scroll down, uh, there is a motion. Um, I can't give it right now because I've been talking, you're not allowed to give a motion at the end of a speech. Unless there's intervening business.
Oh, no, before you go there.
Well, I just have a question. I mean, the the uh, chapter two is action items, and putting it as an appendix seems like an afterthought. Uh, you know, those are the policy things that we're moving forward with, and recommendations are in in the appendix. I don't know if you have, uh, in the future, have uh plans of interspersed that throughout the document, or whether we wanna keep it as an appendix. But an appendix, to me, is ancillary information and not necessarily the way the county wants to move forward, but.
Mr. Chairman, the um, chapter two, in its current form, and it probably will not change, has three categories of columns. Issues, goals, and strategies. It does not have recommendations or action items. It has issues, goals, and strategies. And I think that structure is perfectly fine. It, I could conceive of it, having recommendations and action items, it does not currently have them in that form.
I thought a strategy of an action.
Not not my, not by my definition, any definition I've ever heard. It can be if we put some words to them and and explain what has to happen. But we haven't done that yet. And so what it could well become is that the, if we change those strategies to action items or or crystallize that, it would still be perfect as an appendix because it summarizes what we said in the document, which is really what all of the things do in it in chapter two right now. Um, so I I've gone through chapter two. The format of it is really a struggle to get through. It will make an excellent summary of of what we've covered. We don't need to call it an appendix. We can call it chapter five, a sort of summary of what we've covered. But in my view, it it is currently not, does not fit well in its in its current location. It's just doesn't fit.
I thought they wrote it way back when, when they started this process, what, in those early seventies? That read to me like a collection of conclusions, which should go at the end, at the end, rather than the chapter two. Because a lot of things in there don't really make sense without the explanatory language that occurs in other sections of of the planet as currently sit- situated. So I I'm with John, I think she should move, she should be moved to the back of the document under, we can call it an appendix, or we can call it, you know, a chapter on conclusions, you know, you can sort of do it any way you want to, but for purposes of tonight's discussion, I'd like to get back to the chapters that John had gone through. As I went through them too, and didn't seem like there was much in the way of, there was nothing substantive except for one sentence at the end of the uh.
Preamble.
Preamble.
Right. Um, Mr. Chairman, I would therefore move, since there's been intervening business, subject to final approval by the Planning Commission, I move that the revised comprehensive plan follow the order set in the table above.
Second.
Having a motion and a second, I'd like to further comment. I intentionally added the phrase, subject to final approval by the Planning Commission. If we get through this process and we come to agreement that the order is not right, we can change it.
Well, we've got, I think at the end of the day, we've got a vote on a file, you know, final comprehensive plan. And, you know, I don't view anything we've done so far with the chapter, anything that you have done so far with regard to the chapters you've worked on. First of all, I I don't think they're really substantive, and they're certainly not etched in stone, and we can always go back and work out.
So my 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 question, I have two questions. One, um, you took a Northumberland County and just said county. What was that?
Oh, we wanna get into the edits now?
No, no, I I I just, okay, we'll just wait then.
Okay, please, yeah, there was a reason for it, go ahead. Go ahead, Charlie.
But what I see you're doing is you're changing them chapters around the order of the chapter.
Correct.
And that's for a better look.
That's right.
You're not changing anything else.
That's right, not yet, there that will come later, but yes.
I'm I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Question, yes?
Was there a second? Okay, question? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Um, so next, the, we get into the purpose of what I call phase one, which is basically what we've accomplished so far. Uh, I went through the document. As you recall, the last several meetings, and if you wanna recall them and have a nightmare like I have, we can do that, but we found lots of things like acronyms that were, for example, there are five different variations on how D E Q shows up. There are five different variations on how Department of Health shows up. I could go on and on and on with Department of Conservation and Recreation and so forth, and all of the Chesapeake Bay acronym. They needed to be made consistent. The previous authors of this apparently wrote it piecemeal and and realized, didn't realize that they had already defined an acronym at one point, so they redefined it again many, many times over. A simple cleanup like that was absolutely, there was a number of issues around grammar and syntax, that those weren't very common. And then the other issue was, as you were just raising, Mr. Parker, is the issue of Northumberland County versus the county. Th- that phrase, one of those phrases appear hundreds of times in this document. Most of the time, it's the county. This is the Northumberland County doc. The only time you need to say Northumberland County is when you're comparing it to another county. So, for example, there's a place where we list the counties in the northern neck. Of course, Northumberland should be in there, not the county. There's a place where we're compared to Westmoreland, it's Northumberland versus Westmoreland. So what I did for sake of consistency and to make it easier to read is simply remove the word Northumberland where it was appropriate and insert the. Simplifying the reading.
I'm just partial to Northumberland County, and I understand what you're.
When you pick up the book, it's on the title.
I know it's on the book, but remember, not if it's going to read that book, other real estate folk, whoever's gonna be doing this. And it comes down to, um, um, my personal purpose is that despite, I live in Northumberland County, I like that word, Northumberland, so, you know, county, you county, you don't worry anybody, I wanna be sure that we're remembering Northumberland County.
You were using, we're trying to power it down as opposed to being county with that.
No, Northumberland, work for you, Northumberland.
Okay. So does that mean you want us to go back through the document and wherever the word the issue put in at Northumberland?
I do, I don't know if anybody else, but I do, it's Northumberland County. And um, and I don't know, for legal purposes or for county purposes or whatever, government purposes, it's Northumberland County. Y'all say y'all love to be here, use the name.
Just for for searchable purposes?
Yeah.
Does it make any difference?
No, I mean, you know, it may, it may not, but I'm simply saying, I'm simply saying that I just, I prefer words, Northumberland County, because that's where we are. You gotta write fifty times, a hundred times, right, fifty times, a hundred times, it's Northumberland County.
Well, well, let me just repeat what I just asked you. So do you want us to, do you want someone to go back and replace the with Northumberland?
Well, I'm understanding that the document, when it comes out, will not have red over the black to show any improvement, will not have that.
Right.
So how will the Board of Supervisors know what's been changed?
You want them to know every word that's been changed?
I want them to know everything. Because, because when you change, you're changing a document. And I know that the document is old and might be dilapidated or whatever, but what I'm telling you is that um, when you bring it back and when I, when I showed, when I see this document, I wanna see the changes that were made in in red.
I thought Stuart was keeping track of that.
I was, but then when Mr. Cost uh took his version, he accepted all change. So I've got an archived copy of that.
That's correct.
But if somebody wants to ask, and I'm gonna have two or two or three files that I'm gonna have to give them, and they're gonna have to follow along each one and determine. And anyway, it it just, uh, it's not all in one, yeah, it's not all in one file.
We are setting the records up here so that Stuart has all of every single change. Now, we did ask Mr. Haney at one of our meetings, I don't remember which one it was, do you want to see all those changes when this is presented to the board? Or do you wanna know the big picture stuff? And his response was the big picture stuff, so long as the changes are recorded somewhere.
But he's not the whole board.
I get that. Mr. Chairman, this document was created in twenty sixteen. I do not think that any member, I do not think that any member of the board is.
And it did over the years.
So, okay. I've not been here when that has happened for the Board of Supervisors. Did they go through it line by line to understand what every change was?
We made our revisions and we turned it over to.
When I first got here, Mr. Tadlock was in the uh ending stages of the comprehensive plan. And yes, it has all the, everything that has been changed in one document, and it was one document that went forward. And uh, that's, I mean, I've got those files, you'll look at it, but anyway. You know, I don't know what the open records law is or requiring of that.
We are not violating it.
It it's just transparency that we're not trying to pull the wool over somebody.
This document is intended to stand alone. History is irrelevant when you move for, unless you care about that level of detail. It's the next board that approves the next plan should read the next document. They are two different things. The world has changed in nine years. I don't understand, we are not anywhere near violating any open records act that I'm aware, because I've been involved with those for years. Um, I just don't see, I I I can't imagine if I were on the Board of Supervisors, even I were on the Planning Commission, that I would care about the specifics of the minor changes that have been made in this document so far. And frankly, if we're going to not approve those changes, if you're going to have to argue about all of these acronym changes and the versus Northumberland, you can take the project back and we'll go through it line by line and edit it.
It makes me no difference.
We go, we, what I want is, I want us to be able to understand that this is twenty twenty five. This document is gonna change over the years. And what I don't want to get lost is Northumberland County, but be him. I, you know, just my thing, so.
I like the consistency though. I like the consistency, so we gotta make a decision.
Okay.
One one way or the other, but.
I mean, if somebody were to pick it up and go to an isolated portion of it and saw the county, is that gonna be confusing to them? I mean, we're assuming that it's the Northumberland County Comprehensive Plan, but if you were to just go to an isolated chapter and you saw the county, would you be confused about which county we're talking about?
The the first reference in each chapter, by the way, starts with Northumberland County.
Okay.
Well, uh, contrary to popular belief, I don't think people read comprehensive plans cover to cover. They look at the contents, they find what they're interested in, they go to that section.
They go to an isolated part of the plan that is applicable.
Mainly these by people that either want to justify their project saying the comprehensive plan says this, so you all should approve it, or they wanna go, they wanna find a loophole to get uh around something that that the county has said, uh, but anyway.
Up to John's point, if first reference to Northumberland County in each one of these chapters, maybe even down to each section, Northumberland County is spelled out, and thereafter, it's the county. I don't see how anybody would be confused by that.
No choice.
Mr. Parker, you you happy with what Mr. O'Brien just suggested?
He didn't label that, it's all the time.
Yeah, yeah. Fine, whatever you decide, go ahead.
Well, motion, Stuart, would you advance the slide, please?
I'm sorry.
It's all right. Uh, so this is the motion I intend to make, and since there's been intervening business, I move that all of the minor editorial work on the proposed comprehensive plan as completed by John Cost and Stuart McKenzie and shared in written form with members of the Planning Commission prior to this date be approved in order to enable a more readable draft for further consideration by the Planning Commission. This motion would apply to the following edited parts of the plan. The preamble and introduction, the glossary of acronyms, the table of contents, and list of key graphics, and the following chapters. That's basically all the chapters except chapter two. That's my motion.
Second.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'm voting nay.
Then all?
No.
Okay. Uh, that's what I thought, it's a little bit absurd.
Thank you. Um, let's see, so what I'd like to do next is talk about the, an idea. Because remember when we had this discussion last month, uh, Mr. O'Brien made a motion that we we focus on the style. And so if we go back to the the packet again, Stuart, thank you. It's the handout file.
Handout.
Yeah. Um, in the document, no, no. Yeah, that's right, keep going. In the document, there is frequent occurrence of the the word Francine Merkle. But in this case, it says may wish. But there are many instances where that word is should. And where I see the word should, it drops out as to me as a recommendation. And it may not always be the case, maybe should isn't the right word. And so as a sort of a format thing to call out the cool stuff, I'm gonna suggest that we create what's called a record, a text box, in this case, called recommendation. And the the substance of this doesn't matter, I'll come back to that in a minute. So the 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 word here is the county may wish to continue the development of its historic resources through a comprehensive survey available through V D H R, although the local governments usually record to provide matching funds for the survey. That's a pretty cool thing, if we actually had an updated reference. So a recommendation might be to ask the County Economic Development Commission to curate a complete survey of the historic site and help prepare a historic preservation plan. I'm giving this only as an example. We have something in here we've said should happen, or we may wish to have happen. Why not call it out as a recommendation for readability? So that it it jazzes the document up a little bit and creates visually something that jumps off the page and says, here's something we should be doing for county. Um, I'm not looking to have this approved. What I do want from you all is some affirmation that that sounds like a pretty good idea. There's two parts to that. Number one, create text boxes where appropriate, and I'll work with Stuart to identify the shoulds and the may wish to and so forth. The second part of that is, I'd like to actually get some help from the staff of the, or the members of the Economic Development Commission to flesh some of those out. And if we need a motion to that effect, we could certainly do that.
So you're gonna take that block of recommendations and the little definition you got there, anywhere that uh is applicable that you would.
Blap it in the laptop.
So people would see that this is just, this is a recommendation.
Exactly, exactly, Charlie. And further than that comes back to that that chapter two thing again, we could then call. Exactly, exactly, Charlie. And further than that comes back to that, that chapter two thing again. We could then call those all out. And, and make sure that they're all covered, because right now, chapter, the existing chapter two is mostly about chapter one. Which is, I think, why it showed up where it is. If we put it at the end as I'm proposing, we would now have all four chapters properly covered in it. Um, so let me ask rhetorically, this isn't a motion at this point, the motion's on the next page. Does this sound like a, a pretty good idea or do you think I'm full of shit? No, don't answer it that way because you all think I'm full of shit. Um, does this, 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 this make some sense to you all? Does it sound like okay?
I think what you're doing is over my head. I can never do what you're doing here. You, you have. In your previous life, before you got to Northumberland County. I, I know you did a lot of this and it comes easy to you.
It does.
I, my only concern is I don't want to change any of the meaning. Of anything in here unless we all agree to do it.
Completely agree. I have no heartburn with that whatsoever. My goal is to find places where the word should shows up. Creates an idea and bring every one of them back to you for consideration. So if you want to shoot it down, no heartburn from me. I'm just going to find the.
But you're doing, I, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Charlie.
I agree with it, but I got to say in some chapters. You've got, you know, recommendations in, in the text.
But they're all in the text, that's right.
You know, come up three or four recommendations to a page. I think you're going to have an editing problem, maybe not.
I don't think so. I, the word should surprisingly does not show up very often. There are a few. There were three in the first chapter, only three in the entire chapter, which is seventy-eight pages long. Yeah, chapter, uh, chapter, the water quality chapter, I think it will have the most. Um, so I'm sensing you're all okay with my proceeding, but considering you're flesh, flesh this out and bring it back to you.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea, but, you know. Could, it could have mechanical problems as well. Maybe not figure that out.
Well, could I mention something, Mister Chairman? Um, the planning commission is in charge by statute of the comprehensive plan. Uh, and the economic development commission, uh, you know, they're, I, I thought, I think their job is to. Bring, uh, businesses and, and, uh, solicit, well, help the economy and do what they can for that. Um, and I don't know, we're just, I, I, I agree. I think the recommendation is not a bad idea. It pops out at you. I, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with this particular recommendation, but we'll talk about that after we get through this.
Okay, well, I mean, formatting and, because the, the second thing I do want to talk about is just that, about bringing them into the.
You know.
Let's not go there. Go ahead.
If. Their citizens, they're concerned with the economic conditions present in the county. I don't really care where the idea comes from, as long as it's a good idea. And until we actually see it in print and review it. There, you know, anything else is hypothetical.
Agreed.
And we don't really need to worry about it right now.
Yep, I agree. So one of the points, so again, I'm focusing on the word should. When we, Stewart, to your point, in a comprehensive plan, say that the county, Northumberland County, Mister Chairman. Should do this. Who are we saying that to? That, that's my point. We, we've got a lot of rhetorical nice to haves in here. What I'd like to do is put flesh on the bones. I'm not an expert on this stuff. I haven't lived in this county long enough. I think that there's enough resources, like Mister Johnson, for example. In the, on the economic development commission, unless, and you guys are certainly welcome to participate as well, because you've got a lot of it. More, except for you, I mean, you're quite young, so you don't have as much history either, but.
It's the hair.
Great and fresh ideas. I mean, all, all, all players, I don't want to sit here, meeting after meeting, going through them. Finding them. Let's, let's develop a list of them, some, some ideas, bring in some fresh, some fresh faces on this. And then come back to you all. That, that's my goal.
And you feel that the economic development commission will add to this?
I didn't say economic development commission. I said members of the economic development commission. This would not be something they would vote on. Mister Johnson would be a great resource. There are other people on there who I've gotten to know through my participation with them, who I think have some tremendous ideas. For example, I mean, there's, there's, in the one chapter, the, the land use plan, we talked about the, uh, the, the towns. The, the localities.
Right.
The, the member of the commission from, uh, um, Calio, Dan Stone Blank.
Order.
Yeah. He knows Calio as well as anybody imaginable. If we're talking about Calio. It would be great to have his feedback on what's possible here. So just some thoughts I have.
I think I mentioned this before. When the. Long-term plan for Lancaster County was done, it really focused on. The. Skills and the education that would be necessary ten, twenty years out. And. I thought that kind of had a economic development tone to it. And if we, we've talked about the. Problems of bringing businesses into Northumberland. So if we had better statement goals. That would lead to business development and if, and jobs. And if we spoke about the type of jobs that we hope to attract. That might inform the school board about curriculum should.
Sure.
Though I see nothing but upsides to this, and no downsides.
Yeah. By the way, I, I was, uh, I, I used to live in Loudoun County, obviously a much bigger county by every measure. I was part of their, their comprehensive plan for one chapter, the transportation chapter. They had enormous community involvement. There must have been.
Pages for transportation?
What?
How long was that chapter?
I don't remember. It wasn't, it was surprisingly not very long, but there were, there were a hundred and twenty people on the transportation committee. Hundred and twenty people on the transportation chapter committee alone. Um, so, I mean, you're talking a county with five hundred thousand people, that's a little different handle.
Amazing you got anything done with that many people.
No comment. Um, Stewart, if you, if you go onto the next slide, I, I, I did create a motion specific to this. If you think it's appropriate, I would like to read it and then perhaps somebody will, uh, go along with this. Uh, to develop the further ideas related to comprehensive plan content. Where it says the county should do something in particular, I move that the editing team be allowed to work with members of the economic development commission. And bring back more specific recommendations for further consideration by the planning commission.
Don't move.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, go ahead. Nah.
That's it. Okay. Oh, there's one other thing. Um, I'm sad, I'm going to make sure I get my notes right. Uh, so we have to still update the goals and objectives chapter, for example, and so forth. Okay. Um, one other thing, ideally, um, I probably should have asked Maurice this, but I'd like to bring this back. The, the next round of, the recommendation stuff back to the next meeting. The challenge is the meeting on May the. Fifteenth. Uh, I cannot be here. My son is getting his master's degree. I'm going down to Texas for the ceremony. Can we move the meeting to either May thirteenth or May twentieth, or perhaps have a special meeting in case there's any zoning stuff we have to deal with? I, I, I'd love to do this. I, I'd like to get it back to you. If you want to wait till June, I, I'm fine with that, but, um. Um, I want to keep the momentum.
I agree with you, but I'm also. Happy to leave. Since you're doing all the work, we leave it up to you to decide what's a good day for you. I resent this.
May thirteenth or twentieth, unless you want to wait to June. But again, it, it's up to you in terms of reorder your schedules for a different night of the week. It would be a Tuesday.
I'm good either way.
I'm not sure this room is available. Especially with the, with the board dealing with the budget, but I mean, if you, if you want to set the date, I can definitely check on that. We can send out emails and confirm that, but I, I don't have the schedule. I know we have Thursday is ours.
Understand.
Anything else, it says they could, the board could have special meetings on a whim, because they're deep in the budget right now.
Understood, understood.
Uh, but you all decide and I'll check the date and we can go from there.
You want to do either the thirteenth or the twentieth?
Does anybody have a conflict?
Twentieth is what?
They're both Thursdays.
The third. We got a meeting that night.
How's, how about the third? Is that doable?
Can we not just do, can, can we not just wait and do it in June?
I'd give you more time to hear your name again.
Then, I can see, I got a right hurt on him with three weeks rather than eight, you know. Uh, if you want to wait till June, that's fine. Just a heads up, I, I will not be here at the July or August meeting. So we need to make sure that it gets out and even if we have a bunch of zoning stuff that.
Is there not a?
July or August.
I heard the third, but how about the thirteenth?
I, that can't be right, because I think the third is. Yeah, I'd said the third, it's on thirteenth or the twentieth, thirteenth, thirteenth or the twentieth. Thirteen or the twentieth.
Remember me?
Yeah.
Both are, both are Thursdays, I believe. Both are Tuesdays.
They're Tuesdays. And that would take place of a regular meeting.
Up to you.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure about notification either, but I mean, I should have time to be able to, I think we have to. Publish a notice of change of meeting date or something. Again, that's a county attorney thing I'll find out.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, okay. So twentieth is not an option, because it's an EDC meeting, so. They meet in the sheriff's office.
So you, you don't know what the schedule is for this room, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So could we make it the thirteenth and then if the schedule is not possible, just defer this issue to the twentieth, to June?
Yeah.
Well, and what, they meet here?
No, they made it, uh.
They made it sheriff's office.
They made sheriff's office. But we've only one IT person.
Okay.
But do they, do they need an IT person run? That's going to be a problem for you all, I guess, I'd say. You're there and Robert said, oh, whatever. All right. So we need the guy to run the buttons.
Push the right button, yeah.
Saying he was here tonight.
So May thirteenth is, are you paying debts, pending everything Stewart's got to check out?
Not possible to just do it and work it out.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I, I can check on it Monday. And. Did you say the thirteenth is the, uh, weapon war? Well, that's, that throws out the sheriff's office. But anyway, uh, yeah, I'll check on it and I'll email it Monday, uh, if I can find out everything on that. Uh, Mister Chairman, could we go back to the recommendation? I don't know if, if this was something you're planning on pursuing. The complete survey of historic sites, the Department of Historic Resources has. Criteria that, that these things have to go through, and I, I went and did some research on that.
This was just an example of your talking point.
But the, the request here was that we would partner with D H R and they have a cost share. Um, uh, program where we would pay part of the cost, but they have the expertise. And I don't think laypeople can do it, but they have a manual. There's eight pages for the architectural side. So I, I, I mean, if this was a bona fide recommendation. Uh, I, I would say that's not really what it said. It said the county worked with the D H R. What, what I'm getting at, I don't want to do historic survey that doesn't meet the historic, uh, criteria.
I was just making stuff.
Okay, if that's just a example, I'm not going to go through, that's fine.
So I have, thank you, thank you all of you for your.
Thank you, John.
Does that cover your agenda?
It does. Thank you.
Motion through adjourned?
Why? We could start going back through line by line.
Aye.
I'll make a vote. Intense. Thank you, John.